Hold that. Okay.
Thirty.
Are we missing Dan G yet?
He he texted said he might be a couple of minutes late, so we will proceed and he will join us.
Five thirty.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now five thirty and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. If the clerk will note that for the records, all council members are present. It is our tradition to begin our meetings with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To everyone who is joining us. Since we have been in this season of COVID nineteen global pandemic crisis, we all have pivoted and made different decisions so that we can continue to serve our community. Tonight's meeting is being conducted virtually, and so all of us are joining this virtual meeting by Zoom. Members of the public may watch this meeting online at burnsvilleamn.gov-meetings or Comcast Channel sixteen or eight fifty-nine. If you would like to speak during the meeting, you may call six five one three seven two eight two nine nine. You may also speak by joining us online at zoom.us/join. And more information is available on our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. Please note that there is an audio delay if you are watching us on TV or online. So if you speak, please mute your video broadcast first. If Zoom meetings attendees experience audio issues, we ask you to leave the meeting and then log back in. This usually resolves the issue. We now will move on to the first item on our agenda, and that is with for our announcements, and we also have three proclamations. Our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Regular city council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, June second at five thirty PM, Tuesday, June sixteenth at five thirty PM. We have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, June ninth at five thirty PM, and a special work session will be held after this council meeting to discuss several miscellaneous items that we had to just push to this this week. And all meetings are held online during the health emergency while city buildings are closed to the public. Now, we have three proclamations. The Beyond the Yellow Ribbon proclamation I will read last because we will invite Colonel Mike Huddleston to make remarks and also to read the names of our students who are chosen to go into the military. So our first proclamation is Public Works Week. Whereas public work service provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work system and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, fleet management and parks. And whereas the health, safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and the public works maintenance personnel are called upon in emergency situations at any hour of the day or night to clear snow from our streets, keep our water and sewer systems operating, keep our trees strong and healthy, maintain the fleet of operations and emergency vehicles, and prepare our parks, buildings, playgrounds and facilities for the public enjoyment. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction and maintenance is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of our public work staff. And whereas the efficiencies of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works department are materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And now therefore, I Elizabeth Kautz, Mayor of the City of Burnsville on behalf of the City Council, proclaim May seventeen through the twenty-third, twenty twenty as National Public Works Week. And I urge my fellow citizens to observe this period by acquainting themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and recognizing the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort and quality of life. Proclaim this nineteenth day of May, twenty twenty. The next one is Emergency Medical Service Week. Whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the Burnsville Fire Department are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical service system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, first responders, educators, administrators and others. Whereas the members of the Burnsville Fire engage in specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas the twenty twenty theme is EMS Strong, Ready Today, Preparing for Tomorrow. It is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of our emergency medical providers, Burnsville Fire, by designating and celebrating Emergency Medical Service Week. Now therefore, I Elizabeth Kautz, Mayor of the City of Burnsville on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim in the City of Burnsville, the week of May seventeen through the twenty-third, twenty twenty as Emergency Medical Service EMS Week. Proclaim this nineteenth day of May, twenty twenty. And now our last proclamation is for Burnsville Yellow Ribbon recognition of students entering the military. Whereas the United States military supports the freedoms upon which our country was founded. And whereas entering in the military is a noble and important career choice, almost two point five million people serve in the active and reserve branches of the military. And whereas the Burnsville Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Organization is a nonprofit volunteer organization dedicated to supporting our nation's military, which includes the local active duty, guard, reserve and military veterans communities. And whereas Burnsville Beyond the Yellow Ribbons volunteer forces assist active duty military members, veterans and their families with household chores ranging from babysitting, cleaning to household maintenance. And whereas the Burnsville Beyond the Yellow Ribbon also connects veterans with state, local and federal organizations who provide assistance to veterans who are looking to enter the workforce upon completion of military service. And whereas the Burnsville and Savage communities join with the Burnsville Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Organization to honor students who choose to enter the military. And whereas the United States Congress in two thousand and four passed the resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, a special month to honor both those in and out of the military. Now therefore, I Elizabeth Kautz, Mayor of the City of Burnsville on behalf of the City Council proclaim May seventeen through the twenty-third, twenty twenty as Military Appreciation Week. With a special emphasis on students who have selected careers in the military and urge my fellow citizens to observe this period by thanking the young people in our community who have chosen to enter the military profession in support of our freedoms, health, safety, comfort and quality of life. Proclaim this nineteenth day of May, twenty twenty. And we will be presenting the signed proclamation to Colonel Mike Huddleston, who is joining us today. Good evening, Colonel. We will also, he will be reading the names of those students. So if you recognize any of these students, please thank them for the choices they have made and for their service to our country. Colonel Huddleston, thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council members. I see only half of you got beards like me. The others should grow, grow it too, so. But anyways, I want to thank you, thank you all for letting me speak. This is our fourth year that we've recognized Burnsville High School students that take the oath to raise their right hand and 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 enter the service. And that that means also hats off to the families that that let their students go down this path. And so without further ado, you know, like, like you said, Mayor, we have nineteen students this year that are going into the service. Last year, I think we only had ten or twelve, and so this is, they were probably looking forward to the dinner, but, you know, next year we'll, we'll do that on there. But from nineteen students, like I said, from Burnsville, Eagan and Savage have made this commitment. The, for starters, four of them in the US Marine Corps, so I'll start with that. And then one in the US Army and eleven in the Minnesota Army National Guard, two in the Air Force, so we didn't leave you out on that, yay. And one in the US Navy, so I don't know if we have a Navy member, but one in the US Navy. So then in the Marine Corps, we have Joshua Hanson of Eagan, Austin Strobridge of Burnsville, Grayson Mcfee of Burnsville and Kyler Andrews of Burnsville. For the US Army, we have Tyreshia Maynard of Burnsville. And then for the Minnesota Army National Guard, we have Casey Jensen of Burnsville, Dylan Stettergren of Burnsville, Cody Anderson of Eagan, Mara Milak of Burnsville, Vince Strasavich of Burnsville, Randy Beaton of Burnsville, Harley Clark of Burnsville, Odisha Mack of Burnsville, Angel Billingsley of Burnsville, Matthew Stewart of Burnsville and Kalisha Lawrenson of Savage. So I'll have to pronounce these right. This is the US Air Force, so.
Name hi.
There you go. Gene Roche of Ledger of Eagan, Matthew Gerner of Burnsville. So those two will be going into the Air Force. And then US Navy is Colton McKinley of Burnsville, so hats off to each and every one of them and their families.
Yeah, thank you so much, Colonel, for reading the names of those students. We're proud of them and really thank them for their service to our country as they move on to this pathway for them.
And so and then just to end, Mayor, the my better half, she did media announcement. We copied the proclamations that, and I graciously thank you for giving me that little slice so I could sign too. And 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 then also those that we didn't recognize last year will be given a Target gift card this year.
We're giving everyone who are going into the military a gift card this year, though.
Yes.
Yes. So that's the other thing that everybody should know, that every year we give them a gift card as they make this journey into the military because you and the others have told us that they need some of those things that they need.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes. And so that will give them a chance to get one last minute things. And like last year's, we do this in May because some of them ship off in June, so then we got to catch it before they go. So this is why we do it now.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much for coming in. We'll send you the proclamation.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, and good luck, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're moving on, and the next item is Citizens' Comments. This is the opportunity for anyone who wishes to address the council. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Okay, I don't see that there is anyone who is wishing to address the council on any items that is not on the printed agenda, not in application form that will be coming before us. And so we'll move on to item number three, and this is additions to the final agenda. Ms. Mascolli, are there any emergency items to come before the body?
There are not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, members of the council, are there any emergency items that you would like to address this evening? Okay, thank you. We will move on to item number four, and this is the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item can be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? And I see that no one has asked to address the council on any items. Ms. Mascolli, does staff want an item to be removed for a separate discussion and vote?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Members of the council, does anyone want to pull an item? May I then have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
Oh, who?
Does the clerk have?
Vince, I think you made the motion. You can't second your own motion.
Well, I heard Gustafson make it, but whatever Michelle thinks is necessary.
The clerk, I believe that it was Councilmember Workman who made the motion and seconded by Councilmember Gustafson. Okay, the clerk will take the roll, please.
Councilmember Gustafson.
It was a three-way tie. I.
Mayor Kautz.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Workman.
Aye.
Councilmember Keely.
Aye.
And that is unanimous, and the item passes. We now move on to the regular agenda, and the first item on the regular agenda is the COVID nineteen response update. And the update is being given by our city manager, Ms. Mascolli.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. This is going to be a standing item before you in alignment with the council's expectations as we navigate through COVID nineteen. We're going to have a bit of a tag team here tonight. First of all, we're going to ask our finance director Jenny Rhodey to provide a financial update. Then we'll turn it over to Deputy City Manager Greg Lindberg, who will talk about our recovery framework. And then I will provide some general updates at the end. So with that, certainly welcome any questions throughout, but I will turn it over to Ms. Rhodey.
Welcome, Ms. Rhodey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I have a brief financial update tonight. Two weeks ago, I presented a more extensive update, but the next slide will include just a couple of updated items. Thank you. The first item here is permit revenues. So far through April, the city has collected about three hundred ninety-four thousand in permit revenues, which is approximately twenty-six percent of the budgeted amount of a million five hundred and twenty-six thousand for twenty twenty. While we do anticipate a reduction or slowdown in construction activity in twenty twenty, we have not seen that yet, and right now these revenues are expected at expected levels. So we will just will remain, will continue to monitor that. The second item on the slide is an update of COVID nineteen costs through April of two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. These were unbudgeted items for personnel, emergency paid sick leave, flex time, unemployment costs, PPE cost, cleaning and other supplies costs and public outreach and signage and miscellaneous equipment. We expect the city will incur continued expenses during the year, especially for PPE and other cleaning supplies and personnel. So we'll continue to monitor this and the and the financial implications as we move through twenty twenty. So that concludes my brief update. I don't, if anybody has any questions, we welcome those.
I don't see anyone with a hand up, Ms. Rhodey, so thank you so much for for your presentation and for the update on our finances.
Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Lindberg, I think you're next.
I am indeed. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I will just walk you through a couple of slides that are intended to highlight the framework that our recovery team, really a group of our senior leadership staff, along with department directors from organizational services, some PD and some fire staff have have pulled together, really in the spirit of trying to capture not only our organizational values, but the priorities and expectations that the council had established in late April when it comes to guiding our recovery. That group has been together now for for several weeks, and we have drafted a framework that now is working its way through some employee feedback organizationally. Really, our intention in developing this framework was to continue to be agile. I think something that's worked for us and more importantly for the community has been the amount of flexibility and adaptability that staff put into figuring out how do we not only respond but now recover as we continue to manage through COVID nineteen. And we've asked ourselves a series of questions through the process that really have been focused on three things. The first, making sure that we continue to provide the best possible public service, that we meet organizational and operational needs, and that we also take into account the individual needs of our employees. Everybody is at a different place, and we recognize that to engage and truly connect our employees to their work, that we have to be willing to listen, to communicate well and ultimately respond to their needs as we look at enhancing the level of service that we provide. Next slide, please. We have proposed a three-step roadmap to recovery. Each of the three steps is defined by certain action items. We have suggested that there will be mechanisms in place where we can be flexible in moving forward or backward through those steps. And the three steps are listed here for you. The first step's really about where we are right now, reimagining and rethinking our operations, thinking about what that means for our current levels of service to the community and what that means about public service moving forward and how we how we start to rethink how we do business. The second step is all about reentry, and I could see us very quickly now moving into this step. And that's been the theme of conversation amongst our recovery team. But really, taking what we've learned and and coming back to a next normal that enhances the the level of what we do in every aspect of the service that we provide. The third step, we're thinking about reform. We're thinking about how we really shape that next normal. And like I had suggested, there there are certain actions that we've identified at each of these steps. We've also suggested that there'll be some trigger points for us to think about moving through these phases or steps. And the first one being the status of the virus and our ability to manage it from an organizational and community perspective. The second being our organizational values, that we value collaboration, innovation and excellence, and we want those, we want what matters to us to show through how we're delivering service to the community. And finally, the priorities and expectations that you all have set for us and that we've really used as a as a framework to keep our employees safe, keep our community healthy and ultimately deliver the best possible service through what has been a challenging and uncertain period of time. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about our recovery roadmap or or what what our thoughts are in more detail if you have them.
Members of the council. Oh, great. Okay. There, I see Kara just has a thumbs up. I I just want to say, Melanie and Greg and everybody, thank you because you've taken from a high level and you've taken things that we said that were important, the priorities, the expectations, and you've designed the roadmap to the future. So thank you so much for all that you're doing. I know that the tactical part that you are responsible for is going to be handled well by following these principles and and foundational principles and guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, Melanie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm heading clean up now, so if we could have the presentation come back up, thank you, Ken. We've got a couple operational updates that I just wanted to share with you in the interest of clarity and just communication. So we talked about how we are reimagining how we're going to provide service. When we originally changed our operations in response to COVID nineteen, we moved our inspections team to virtual inspections, and that has worked fine and it's worked well, and a lot of creativity has come out about it. But we have made the decision to, with appropriate measures put in place, resume in-home inspections. So we are taking care of our employees and the community to make sure we're providing the best service possible. Additionally, with the changes of the governor's order, we have been able to reopen Burnham Wood, and we have made some operational changes there as well. Well, no, we haven't hired any seasonal staff, so we've had a great team that's really helped us make this work well. We have purchased a bunker rake for more efficiency. We're working on procedures to reintroduce carts and concession sales. Those are items that we are hearing from our patrons that they are interested in, and so we are working to find a way to accommodate that in a safe way, as well as expanding our online registration or online experience there. So thus far, rounds this year compared to last year are overall, they're up, although we do have a loss in revenue because we don't have any leads. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as we think about our public facilities, we've got a number of them that are available to the community, and things are evolving on a regular basis. So our athletic fields are open to the public. We have, we will reduce the level of maintenance, so the striping and putting up the bases and those kind of things that we would normally accommodate with seasonal employees and recognizing the heavy usage by our associations is not happening in the same way. But we are working with our associations that once those fields can be reopened, how can we do that in a collaborative manner? The beach is planned to be reopened. The typical opening date would be this week, and so we are still identifying that date for opening. We, excuse me, um, there will not be concessions there. We will remain, keep concession stands closed and our permanent restroom facilities closed, although we do have portable restrooms, and we're determining how if we can provide some other food service or concession service there for patrons. We are installing additional signage that welcomes people to the the beach and to all of our other facilities, although reminding them to stay socially distanced as recommended for public safety. The skate park and Cliff Fest Lions Splash Pad are both programmed to be reopened to the public on June first. Again, with the signage that we've talked about. And the final item is the do not, the final items that do not have scheduled reopen dates are our park buildings themselves as well as the Niclet Commons Water Feature. Niclet Commons Water Feature is a resource-intensive destination within our community and outside of our community as well. And we also have remires scheduled for that later this year. So for this time, you don't have any The mayor's scheduled for that later this year, so, um, for at this time, you don't have any anticipated opening for either of those facilities. But we will continue to monitor it as we are monitoring our other sites. Next slide, please. And programming has taken a little bit of a sideways turn because of the changes. Due to COVID, but we do have a really smart team that's working together to reimagine how our programming can come into place. Um, in fact, one of our new events was just. Yeah, promotion this afternoon. It's a drive-in movie at our ice arena coming up on June fourth, so there's a number of events, so I'd encourage the community. Uh, to keep their eyes open. Our staff is working hard to try to, uh, remain connected. And then our ICE Center staff is working with ICE Center Association throughout the state. Um, to figure out, to determine how to safely reopen those facilities, and so we would have a phased plan. Once we are allowed to open that facility. Next slide, please. And as the council's aware, we've been, uh, putting measures in place to help support our business community, so a couple items are articulated on the, the slide. I won't necessarily read through them for you, but knowing that we are, um, working to see how we can partner and support our business community during this challenging time. And final slide, please. Um, and then some of the overall service impacts with the. No, not hiring any seasonal employees. We will see a reduction in some of our mowing, uh, frequency, trimming frequency. So I'll ask for the, the community's patience as we work through some of these changes. And, um, as well as AIM Center will remain closed for the time being. We do not have a reopen date for that as well. So with that, Madam Mayor and Council, I'm happy to stand for any questions. Our team has done a great job of. Mapping this out for us, and I'd like to express my appreciation. Happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Councilmember Kara Schultz.
Thank you very much. Um, that, that was an excellent, excellent update. I'm happy to see that and happy to see our facilities. Um, having those, those dates, looking at reopenings. That was really good. Uh, I did have one question on bathrooms versus portas. I'm sure there's a reason why looking at portas versus bathrooms. I'm not sure if that is like a servicing issue or whatever. Um, but I was thinking more along the lines of ability to wash hands, so, but maybe you have more information on that?
Uh, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Schultz, absolutely. We've had those conversations on a staff level, and I think you raised some very good questions. Thin questions that we've asked. Um, it's a service issue. Um, we want to be able to maintain, um, a certain level of friendliness. We are investigating what it would take to open up those facilities and maintain them in the way they would need to be maintained, so we are looking at that.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Mescolli. I think you and staff. Are doing a fabulous job and really understanding what our needs are in a community and making sure that our community is safe. And our employees are safe as they continue to serve the people of Burnsville. Is there any other comments? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Keely makes the motions, second by Councilmember Schultz. Um, if the clerk could please take the roll.
Councilmember Gustafson.
Aye.
Mayor Kautz.
Aye.
Councilmember Keely.
Unmute. We did not hear your vote, Councilmember Keely.
I, sorry, I hit the spacebar, but my cursor moved off that screen. Sorry about that.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Workman.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous and, and the item passes. We stand adjourned and we will take a five-minute break. So that our staff can reposition and move us into the work session. The work session will convene in five minutes, so.